Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. We'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join in the reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could you please do your roll call?
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fullham.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Sear.
Here.
Okay, does everyone give a chance to preview the minutes from the last meeting on December 6th?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Poe, same side. Well, there's so many dots on this thing, I had to shrink it, and I can only read about half of it.
Michael Ward.
We will start with contract for services with Adams County Solid Waste District.
So, Adams County Solid Waste Management District and both the City of Decatur and the City of Burne enter into annual contracts. This is a straight renewal. A few years ago, the district had determined that rates are going to be adjusted on an annual basis, but wanted to provide cities with the ability to better prepare and budget on an annual basis. So, there was a cap of a maximum of 5% of an annual increase. And then just this morning, decided that adjustments would be looked at based on the Department of Labor Statistics CPIU for water sewer and trash collection, based on November of each year. And that figure came out December 13th, and it was 5%. So, either way, the district would have assessed increases or changes in the contract price. This year, it's a 5% increase. So, the contract rate for this year is $51.93 per ton of solid waste disposed at the transfer station.
That's up from, do you have, what is the year from last?
I believe it's a 5%.
Yeah, whatever 5% is.
It was $49 and change per ton.
Just under 50.
I think it was like $49.73 maybe.
Yeah, okay.
The district approved this and signed off on it this morning, and so it's presented to council for approval and signatures.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the Adams County Solid Waste District.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poe, same side.
And then, Phyllis, there is an E-Verify certificate with it, just without this morning, and so he wasn't available to sign off on that, but I'll get him brought in as soon as we get it.
This one?
Nope.
All right. Let me do it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to get the wallet time. Sorry, buddy.
Next on the agenda, because of the 2020 census, we had some changes in the numbers of people in different districts in the community. So, Anne had to work on a redistricting to make, from what I understand, they take an average of every district of the population there, and everything has to be within 10%. We had two districts that were outside of those boundaries, so she had to make some moves in there to make everyone pretty close to each other. And I think it affected just two districts, right? One and three?
Correct.
First of all, I want to thank Anne, because she spent a lot of time on this. She started, when did you start on this? September?
Phyllis and I have each talked with Ethan Snyder and Jim Vogelweed multiple times over the last several months, in large part to try and get clarification on Decatur's population. Adams County GIS, the county figures, and the 2020 census calculations all differed. And it wasn't until the 7th that we got confirmation on what the population actually was and had the ability to get going with this. So, it's worked out. We've, districts one and three are contiguous to one another. The highlight, Kurt's got it brought up, got the map brought up. The segment that's outlined in dark black, or, well, black is dark, but outlined in black, is the affected area. And within the ordinance, it describes the specific population blocks, but it encompasses 157 people within the City of Decatur in an area that is bordered by Nutman Avenue on the north, North 13th Street to the west, Adams Street on the south, and 11th Street on the eastern. That, that affected area would go from District 3 into District 1. And by doing that, the population distribution in its current, in its current fashion, you look at the overall population of the city, and how it's broken up into the different districts, and take the average of the four districts, that is your average population. There was over a 12% variance between our highest populated district and our lowest populated district compared to the average, and that's what created the need to redraw boundary lines. By moving this section from District 3 into District 1, we equalize the population distribution across the four districts to under 3% variance, which is, which is a very equalized distribution. The community is equally represented among the council districts by doing it this way.
Well, it's really very clean, and it's really the same neighborhood, basically, taking from 11th Street to 13th Street.
And frankly, it takes, I mean, 11th Street on the east side, if you live on the east side of 11th Street, you're represented by District 1. If you live on the west side of 11th Street right now, you're represented by District 3. And so this just kind of gives a little bit more cohesiveness to that neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
For the, again, we have two of our high school students here from the youth council. Just to clarify for what's going on here, Cindy was in government class yesterday. Myself and Representative Matt Lehman went and spoke in their class, and we talked about this a little bit. So, the whole idea of this is to give equal representation from the different areas of the city to vote for their councilmen. Matt Dyer represents the whole city, he's the city councilman at large. Scott has the northeast district, or the north side, Tyler has the south, and Craig and Wyatt are east and west. And what happened is, the east and west became a little bit further off, there's a lot more people on the west side of town. So, she had to move some people back into the east side to make sure they're all close to the same population. So, the representation amongst the city is the same for their councilmen that they're voting.
Nice job.
Thank you. Okay, so, with this, our county precinct lines are tied in very closely with our district lines. By moving our city district lines, we are crossing county precinct lines, and that is allowed by statute in order to equalize the population distribution across the districts. So, by law, we're permitted to do, but it does require us to notifying and make this ordinance, the adoption of it, subject to approval by the county commissioners and the Indiana Election Division. And so that is built into this. In addition, because it does affect so many people within the public, it would likely require us to hold, and it does need to be done by the end of the year, it would likely require a special meeting of council in order to have its third reading and final adoption. To further complicate it, it has to be filed with the clerk's office. An adopted ordinance has to be filed with the clerk of Adams County. But I have to say that the clerk's office is open for the calendar year, is December 28th.
Of course.
So, looking at next Tuesday, could we hold a special meeting in order to get final consideration to this ordinance? Please?
Is there a possibility for next Monday?
The 26th? I'm available every day, so whatever works for everybody else.
School's closed.
I'm available. Monday or Tuesday, he had plans for Tuesday night.
And it doesn't need to be at our regular council time either. I mean, it, there's-
But it needs to be what, 48 hours?
48 hours notice.
48 hours notice.
So, it could be during the day, if we wanted it to be during the day. That's okay.
I'd be okay with that. What about you guys?
I'd be okay with that too, I guess. I can do with anything.
Matt's probably working.
I'm good, I'll be there.
He can walk down the stairs.
Basically, it's going to be the third reading, is what it's going to be.
It will be a very succinct meeting.
Pick a time and date, guys. Earlier-
If it's earlier, if it's before 4:00, we could technically get it filed with the clerk's office, possibly yet that day.
Ooh.
So, if it's earlier in the day on the 27th, it would be-
What's your schedule like, Scott?
I have nothing to do. I live two blocks away, so 8:00, 1:00, 5:00.
You're on Christmas break.
What day do you want to do?
Earlier is better for me.
What's, do you have a lunchtime, Matt?
How about, how about 2:00 on the 27th? Or 3:00?
On the 20 what?
On the 27th.
I'd rather go closer to, if we're going to go in the afternoon, I'd rather go a little bit earlier, just so that-
We have any time to get it coming.
2:00?
Yeah.
Like, are you talking like you've got to do it like at 1:00, or noon, or 11:00?
Like, correct.
9:00.
Well, what about 10:00?
Sure. 10:00?
27.
I'm glad you said you had something going on, because that's my son's birthday, so I'm glad I didn't schedule for Tuesday night.
Okay, so-
10:00 on the 27th.
Third reading, December 27th at 10:00 a.m., here at City Hall, Council Chambers.
So, this will be a-
And this is a special council meeting.
Correct.
And then, commissioners need to be here, or we just take it to them?
No, we file this with the clerk's office. I've given Mark Burry a notification of what we're doing, and the clerk's office will review it with their county election board and give directive to, or give information to the commissioners. And so includes, as Exhibit B, proposed redrawing of precinct lines, of how those would conform with, with our new boundary line.
10:00 a.m. it is. December 27th, 10:00 a.m., Council Chambers. Probably won't last very long.
So, I just need to post it 48 hours prior?
Correct.
So, it's have to be the end of this week, right? Monday will be, oh, you just have to post it.
I just have to post, no, we have a special meeting on the 20th. We'll just be discussing the third reading of-
On the calendar.
2024, right?
We need to, we need to bring this ordinance up now.
Do we, okay, do we want to talk about the sessions we need for the police department with the-
Do you want me to introduce, have this introduced?
We want to get this ordinance first, right?
Yep. This would be, are there any, are there any other questions about how the redistricting was done, or what, any concerns or discussion on that part? Otherwise, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 2022-24.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022-24 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Ordinance number 2022-24, an ordinance of the City, an ordinance of the City of Decatur Common Council amending Chapter 31 of the 2015 City of Decatur Code of Ordinances is supplemented regarding council districts for the City of Decatur.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-24 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second, roll.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullham.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2022-24 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Ordinance number 2022-24, an ordinance of the City of Decatur Common Council amending Chapter 31 of the 2015 City of Decatur Code of Ordinances is supplemented regarding council districts for the City of Decatur.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-24 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call, boot.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullham.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sear.
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2022-24 for its third reading for our special meeting on December 27th at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Poe, same side?
Thank you all very much.
Is there a possibility of getting a copy of the map?
Do you have it been emailed to you? They're, it's in your email.
I don't get it hard to read, Black and White.
Tell them to get that email. I worked with, and a special thanks to Erin Hirely, because she gave, she spent over an hour of her time with me today, working on building larger, in color, detailed maps. So, once we got those done, and that wasn't until like 3:30 this afternoon, so those 3:30, 4:00-
I still have email issues that I've got to work through, so.
Okay.
It is hard to, we better have a paper one, because it's still hard to see via digitally.
Okay.
It's hard to see like where the line is. You can see a map.
You got, I emailed council copies of the-
But I still tried to blow it up to see.
So, I don't know.
I see what you're saying.
But, I mean, we can make, yeah, we can make copies.
It made sense, I just set it up here, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
The goal course keeps going.
Once it's adopted, I mean, we can make, you guys all copies if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Once it's all updated.
Thank you, Anne, Phyllis, and Erin Hirely for helping. Ethan Snyder came in and helped at the end to get the, you know, Anne really struggled for two months trying to get actual population numbers.
For two months, couldn't get the number.
It's hard to redistrict when you can't get actual numbers.
Is there particular reason why?
We don't know why. But, in that power, Ethan Snyder came in and helped, so.
There was just a discrepancy between, and I couldn't get anyone to give confirmation as to what the numbers were and what was being run it on our GIS system that actually displayed our population blocks, was not the same as what our county was representing, and the numbers and the way that they were telling us it needed to be redistricted. And those numbers weren't the same as the numbers being represented for the City of Decatur based on the actual census population. I needed GIS to be accurate, so that I could understand how to manipulate and move population blocks, to understand how the numbers shifted between the districts, but that number wasn't.
It weren't matching.
We got it. We got it.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it. And, and thank you to Ethan Snyder, because he did-
Doesn't seem like it should be that complicated, but.
He even emailed me separately after, after December 7th with an app that gave me access to the population blocks with the updated population data, and is really what allowed us to get this completed. So, appreciate his time and effort, and that very much.
Jamie, you want to talk about rental rates?
So, I just want to discuss what the rental rates are now for the Penn B Depot and the Hive, and talk about raising those. Right now, the Penn B Depot rents out for $25 an hour with a minimum of a 2-hour rental, so $50. If you rent the depot, all of your tables and chairs are included, and you pay the hour before and the hour after at no added cost. We do pay a 20 cleaning fee with every rental, so I'm just asking to see if we could, of that, to be $50 for the first hour, that kind of helps cover the additional cleaning fee and other fees that are associated with it, and then $25 every hour after. So, instead of two hours being $50, it would be $75. And it's still very affordable, that's one of the things, we want to make sure it's affordable so the community can use it, but we also want to make sure that we can maintain it.
Well, I agree with your, that the rental, or I'm sorry, the cleaning fee be a part of the fee that's being paid. The city shouldn't take responsibility for that.
You want to do these separately or together?
I am doing together.
Okay.
However, yeah. So, for the Hive, right now, it's $50 for the first hour and $25 every hour after, which is what I had suggested to do for the Depot. For the Hive, I'm suggesting you use $50 every hour, because of the artwork that's up in this, the liabilities that go along with it.
And we're paying an employee to work there.
Exactly.
Right. So, it's still going to be very affordable. It's a great space and a great asset for our community. It's just helping cover some of the fees.
So, for the Hive, it's what, 50 up front?
50 an hour.
At 50 an hour, straight across the board?
That's what I'm suggesting, yeah. Right now, it's just 50 for the first hour, 25 every hour, so it'd be going up, if you rent it for two hours, $25.
So, yeah, it'd be $100 if you rented it for two hours.
And then, Penzi-
Which is very reasonable.
And you do have all of your tables and chairs there as well, and you also get in the hour before and the hour after, at no cost.
Can we roll these into one motion?
I'll make a motion to take her recommendation.
I think, did you say the Penzi is going to be 50 the first hour and 25 after?
Exactly.
And she, Anne says we need two motions, one for each.
Okay. Oh, let's start with the Penzi.
Finally, we need to motion, all second.
On the Penzi rental rate increase, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the same side?
I'll make a motion for the Hive, for Jamie's recommendation of $50 for each hour. That does include an hour before and an hour after of no cost.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the same side?
As an aside, in the new year, speaking of the Hive, it's going well.
Yeah, yeah.
I've had a dozen people in the jewelry store in the last month wanting to know when, I know the Hive is open, but they want to know when is the Hive open, so there's more buzz about the Hive, so.
I do have one question, is-
I'd like to see it opened.
When does this take effect?
Thank you. That was one of, one question, and it should be effective for all new contracts.
Yes.
As of a certain date.
As of a certain date.
So, do we want to go with January 1?
So, we have to update all of the paperwork and get it up on the website, which I should be able to do next week, so by January 1, as long as that-
Makes sense.
Okay. I'll make a motion that both go into effect January 1 of 2023, recognizing existing contracts will remain the same.
Yep. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in the same side?
So, maybe Jamie, in the new year, if we could get our new director to give director's report, and at some point, is there a need to increase more staff time there, because it's going well?
And we do have volunteers that are filling in some of the hours to get extra hours.
So, every Friday for the past month, there has been a volunteer there from 4:00 to 7:00.
And I was, I was in there yesterday, she was very appreciative of the pay increase that she received, and was, you know.
And I think today, I signed a claim for three or four pieces of artwork that were sold in the last-
Great. Definitely gets them put back, and then the rentals are, the rentals are insane. It's getting rented very often.
We had just about 50 rentals for the Hive last year, and a little over 40 for the Depot, so.
Great. She said that they've got another painting thing scheduled, and she has over 25 or-
It's filled out, yeah.
Great.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
She really has personnel to be for the count.
Yeah, she does a good job, for sure. She takes pride in it, that's the main thing, she really does. Okay, Kurt, you want to talk about the discussion over the business registration program?
Tony Lawson wanted to be here tonight, but he has a situation at home, he can't make it. So, basically, one of you guys have heard me get up there once in a while rant and rave about building codes, fire codes. Heard me get a little excited when I hear about parties being thrown down at the Hive, and how many people might be there. The reason for this is because the actual building codes and the fire codes, they actually will assign a use group to every type of commercial building, even a residential house has a use group. And these are basically state codes that have been adopted by every state through the ICC. Some of the problems we're starting to run into when a new business comes into town and takes over an existing building, every type of business has a use group classification, whether it be a dance hall or a movie theater, which would be an A for assembly, or church, A for assembly, or to be like this building here, which is a B for just business, office space. There's other facilities, the high hazard areas that would deal with petroleum products and so forth. Problem Tony and I are starting to run into, well, not starting to, we've run into it for a while now, a new business comes in, takes over an existing building, and what that business is doing on the inside of that building, whether it's modifications they're making, or whether it's just an occupancy type of business that they're moving into that building, and that building is not equipped to handle what they want to do. We're finding out about it after the fact. A good example was a solar company out in the industrial park that was there six months before we even knew they were there. Theoretically, they, nobody can go into an I-zoned area, or O-zoned area without getting permission from the VZA. So, six months later, Tony and I are, being the bad guys, breaking the bad news, hey, you got to come in front of VZA. Makes for a lot of hard feelings between these business owners and Tony and myself. Makes for a lot of hard feelings between these business owners and Tony and myself. We want to bring as much new business in Decatur as we possibly can. We have no issues with that. But our job is to make sure that those businesses are safe for both public and the workers and the people who own those businesses. We keep getting asked the same question over and over again by state officials, more than one, as to why we don't issue certificate of occupancy to every new business that comes in. Because by doing so, that will allow us to go in and basically inspect the building for what they want to use it for. If I have somebody come in downtown here in a C-1, C-2 area, throw the paint, we start spraying paint in cars, there is certain stipulations, they got to have designer leases, they got to get approvals and everything else, not just through us, through the state. And now, we don't know they're here, like I said, we're being the bad guys.
What do other cities do to kick that off so that that...
A lot of other municipalities, and Tony and I have been pulling up different ordinances from other, Noblesville is a very good one, that they do have an occupancy or a certificate of occupancy program, business registration. Brad and I and Tony have actually went out to certain businesses. We started our own registration program where we just go out and we need to know, okay, who's the contact for this building? What's your number in case of fire?
Well, is there, is there a trigger when they've purchased the property that can trigger it to...
Well, we would have to get real estate agents involved. And see, that's the other tricky part, is how do we get, if we were to do a free business registration program, how do we get it up to the pub? I mean, we can put it in the paper, but not everybody reads the paper. We can put it on our website, but not everybody.
But is it, like Noblesville, how do, does the real estate agent, is that, are they part of that or...
That's, all we've been able to do is read their actual ordinance, which gives a list of situations.
Sometimes it's not going to change owner who owns it.
Right.
It's just rented a new company.
Yeah.
Or industrial park.
Yeah, a lot of problems. A lot of buildings are owned by the same person.
They just change.
And he's tenured the leads today, and he's got a new one in here tomorrow, and we don't find out about it for six months. A prime example, Tony just had one not too long ago, that I knew it was going in, but the ones that were being made didn't require designer lease, didn't even require a permit from our department. But when Tony got wind of the business going in, he visited that business and he got in there and he seen 10 code violations, started with fire codes. Me and the V-grads being blocked.
It's too close to the ceiling.
Storage too close to the ceiling. If you have a sprinkler system, you got to be within 18 inches of anything you store on a shelf from the ceiling. Don't have a sprinkler system, it's 24 inches.
Yeah, I got in trouble with that once on a storeroom in southeast.
So, like I said, Tony and I have been looking at different ordinances from other communities. We just wanted to bring this up as a conversation to get a feel, because I know a while back we tried to get the vacant building registration on and that took notice of that for quick. The problem running into is when we come in, nobody, these business owners don't want to spend any more money than they have to, at any point, nobody does. But if we can get it up front versus coming in after the fact and they've made these changes and now they've got to change half of what they've done, it's costing them more money.
Yeah.
That makes it even worse.
When it could have been a simple thing.
Correct. Or if it would have, could have been stuff they knew upfront, they could have avoided it.
Right.
And save some money.
Well, the other thing is, I mean, for the safety of our police and fire too, not knowing what's in a business, you know? If police get called because of an open door alarm or the, or fire gets called because of fire, you know, they may go in there and go, holy cow, I had no idea this is what was going on in this business, and they walk into an unsafe area, whereas if this was going on, they would know what they're getting into.
Somebody's storing lithium batteries and they explode and you guys don't know.
Right. So I guess what are you asking to investigate other cities and find out how their fire next? I think, well, that's a good question. How do you know?
Right.
I mean, how do we know that businesses switch hands or a new business come into a building?
Couldn't the county have something on file, like on transferring property?
Yeah, but if someone leased it, they would have no idea.
Yes, yeah.
Unless it was recorded.
Is it a utilities report? Do they have to switch their utilities?
David obviously would, I mean.
If they own the building.
I mean, you need a trigger, and I'm just trying to come up with a trigger.
Well, basically what I'm after is, is this something that we can be allowed to go after?
Yeah, yeah.
Or that's spinning our wheels and are we going to get shot at?
No, I, I think it is a worthy need. It's just figuring out how to best be informed and that you then can make that contact and...
You got a recommendation, Kevin?
Kevin's saying.
Same way with on the utility side, we could work with the building department as far as the customer has transferred, we could do that way, and it may have to be a multi vested, these utilities, these, or his office.
But if it's the same owner, that's not going to solve it.
Yeah. If they pay their, if you want to pay utilities, then no, that won't.
Right.
But, right, I'm saying if Steve Curry owns a building and includes the utilities in the rent, you don't know that that changes this area.
But.
Yeah, I think investigating is one of the best practices for Decatur.
One option, but you're going to have to use every option you got.
I don't think we're going to eliminate this issue totally.
Right.
I think we can get closer.
We can get better at it.
I think we can get a lot, lot better at it.
By educating realtors, talking to the utility department, and talking to tenant or building, people that own the buildings, and just saying, hey, if this, get the word out there that we need to know when a new business comes in.
Is it something that you want to have a list of a registration of whatever?
We've already got that. I've got, I've got an electronic file of every business in town, we just don't have all contact information. And we spent quite a bit of time changing because after the fact we find out, oh, they're not here no more, somebody else is here. This also helps us keep track of building occupancy classification.
So it's something that you can basically sort of type in, if you have a business registration, and if they come in to change their utilities.
Correct.
Or if you find someone that didn't do it right the first time, you hand them this form and say, hey, you need to register in the city of Decatur.
Right, and actually, when we were slower this year, there was a couple weeks ago, we got pretty slow, Brad and I, we went up and down 11th Street, went up and down 13th Street, and it was out, came back to collect them later. I mean, there's over 600 some businesses.
Right.
In this area, so.
And like you said, we want to encourage.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to appear like we're being hard to work with, but at the same time, we've got a higher power above us asking us all these questions, why we're not doing this and telling us what we should be doing.
Right.
And it makes sense. It's just a safety factor.
Right.
So your list is not a reg, a business registration right now, because right now we don't have one in the city?
Well, it's a business registration, one that we go after. We don't have a new owner coming to us. Every once in a while, we'll get somebody who will call us and say, do you have a business registration program or do you have a business license requirement? Some municipalities make businesses apply for licenses.
Is that something you want to investigate?
I wouldn't mind it. I don't want to charge anybody for anything, I just want to be able to be on top of this thing so we know who's doing what, when and where.
I would say, I mean, to do all the investigation you can and see what other cities are doing.
Maybe you could forward us some of those ordinances you're reading?
No reason to recreate the wheel, somebody's already doing it, right?
But Tony's finding out that some of these ordinances is, he, we're going to end up amending our own fire ordinance. He's working on that right now.
Okay.
He keeps coming in and we need to do that. Okay, just, just do it, and when you're done, give it to us.
Yeah, we're starting a new year, so we're starting new numbers.
I was just going to try and, try and make sure I get past 24 this year.
And for the high school students that are here, I know you guys, you probably have some tests this week and stuff, if you guys don't want to stick around, feel free to leave. I know it's here last week before break, so, not you, Dominic, you're not in high school anymore, you're staying here. Just kidding, but no, if you guys need to leave, feel free to go, because I know it's already 8 o'clock, so. Okay, next we have the annual certification of elected officials on compliance with the city's nepotism policy, including involving, sorry, involving direct line of supervision.
So this is saying that you're not hiring anyone that's related to you, and related means your spouse, parent, step parent, child, stepchild, brother, sister, stepbrother, stepsister, nephew, niece, uncle, aunt, son-in-law, including half-flood and adopted children. So Mayor, and then this is also, I'll also pass out to you the, one for contracting, that you're not contracting with any of your relatives either. So there's actually two certifications papers, Matthew.
I like this, because Jamie members cannot pick their jobs.
Is it just one piece of paper?
Just two, one's for contracting, like your relatives, and one's for not hiring anyone, your direct line of supervision.
Do we have to, does that matter for like kids or something?
If they're under your direct line of view.
Well, direct line, right.
Right, if you have somebody else, it's okay.
You want us to print her name underneath, is that what that is?
Well, I, I, yeah, she did that, but she was nice, she already typed the names under, so you don't have to do that.
Okay.
So, you're good. That made it easier.
Then we also have, oh, this is, then we have the contracting one, you already did the contracting one?
Yeah, I did do that.
Okay, now we have the annual conflict of interest disclosures.
And this is for any employee that does work for the city, they're opposing that they are receiving a profit from the city. Brian Brown for White Barnwood Working, Tyler Fulham Cam from Campman's Renovation, Anne Razzo for DeVos Bakeringsworth and Razzo, and Razzo for Professional Land Title, Corey Ham for the Police K9, Jeff Sheets for Fabrication Welding and Repair Products, Tim Almond for Almond's Carpet and Furniture Cleaning, Taylor Gage for TG Concrete, Justin Wheel for WM Woodworks, Anthony Stimson for HAW Trauma Systems, Ryan Parr for Dusty Road Printing. I'll file these with the state board of accounts on line on Gateway, and then the county clerk gets a copy of this too. So we just need to make all these a matter of record.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, to make all of these a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same side. Okay, next we have, must be the last meeting, there's a lot of annual things here.
Yeah.
Incumbrances.
I sent all these to you too, so you have copies, but these are items that things were ordered, but they haven't come in, so we're encumbering, the money's over into the 23 budget. The police department is encumbering for 103 D badge, hard enamel coins, $935. Did you want me to read all these?
I read them all.
You read them all? Are you good then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So the grand total for all the encumbrances. Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, for a second. Oh, you got it.
Make a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same side. So Victoria, those are things that were budgeted for this past year's budget, they haven't had time to pay for them yet, were invoiced, so they're going to be paid next year, but still out of last year's budget. They just have to get approval from the council to do that. Okay. Now we have a resolution for the transfer of funds.
I also sent you guys an email with this resolution of all the transfers. This is not new money, it's just transferring monies within their budget. So, some departments are short on fuel and operating expenses. For the sanitation, it was transitioned to automated garbage collection. Park and Rec had some usage on the utility leaks, and I think the police department bought some items at the end of the year, additional items. Did you have any questions on transfers or...
This is Resolution 20, 22-20?
Let me find my book, somewhere in there. If you are correct.
No. Yeah. Is that right?
You are right.
I think it's right.
You are right, I had it here.
20, 22-20?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 20, 22-20 by short title only. I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same side?
Resolution number 20, 22-20, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 20, 22-20.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have that Mylar from the Grey Goose, that's already signed by council, right?
Go sign, boys.
We don't have to say anything, it's sitting up there.
Okay.
You can just run through the mission in border works, so.
Sign off on it, kind sir.
Do we need approval before they sign it?
Correct.
Right, so we need a motion to, this is, it was approved by the planning commission and the border works, so we need a motion to approve this Mylar.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same side?
We need to see that in the council members. Do I need something to get in?
The council.
I think we have developments growing in about every corner of the city right now.
Sign off, you just sold the last lot of the Lake Chirs.
Here's the council.
I guess.
There's a Greek lady.
Hers just sold.
She did.
What?
Stay up here.
She's good?
Sold it.
All those things.
They built, I hope they built a basement to walk out, look better, walkout basement. They tend to, but the last lot of Lake Chirs sold to the.
I have one more page.
Was it Greggy's face, is that what that's called?
Council also needs to approve the county commissioners' neural agreement for the seller.
Okay. Look, Whylan's not here.
We still got a quorum. Oh, is it a resolution?
Well, he doesn't need to sign it, just Daniel needs to sign it.
It's just, so we approve the county commissioners, the animal shelter for next year.
Oh.
Border works approved it, but they're going to look forward it, getting some clarity on the, how it's run and what the contract is and all that, so we need approval from council. council, as we had approved from Border Works. To approve, well, we already approved painting, it's just signed the contract, right? This is the contract for the animal shelter, that Border Works already approved.
Your autograph.
I'll make a motion for Dan to sign the contract. I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
What else we got? That's all mine. I'll stop. Keep close. Send the children home.
I'm sorry for just saying.
Oh, did you, I have one more item, but did you have?
I just need to sign one more time, so you can, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay. This next thing will probably involve Jamie, Jeremy, Devin. We're looking at, so the reporter app that we have on the, on the website, where people can go and report problems, it was written by Ethan back when he was, he worked for the city, and it's just, the software is getting outdated, it needs updating, it's just, it's just something that can't be fixed anymore. So we started looking at different options, things we can do, there's, so we're going to talk about a thing called C Click Fix, it basically does that same thing, but with a lot more detail. We know that New Haven, and New Haven and Huntington are both using it, so is Mission Walcott, some other towns. The other thing that we talked about, that Jamie's been looking into a little more, is called TextMyGov, and the whole idea of that is, if we need to get mass, maybe emergency things out, you know, and this is one thing I talked with the youth council about, is how do you think we reach all demographics of our city? You have the newspaper, you have the radio, you have Facebook, you have Instagram, Snapchat, all these different things, but how do we reach all ages? If we have something we really need to get out. So there is a thing called TextMyGov, but obviously people have to sign up, but once you have their cell numbers in there, if we want to send something out, it goes to everyone, like the school when they have a delay, you know, we all either get a phone call or a text or something like that. So that's more what this TextMyGov is, so they're two totally different things. The reason we're bringing them tonight is, they're both offering end of the year deals, right, if we sign it before the end of the year. Now, I'm not saying we need to approve it and sign it or anything like that, what I'm saying is, let's get it on the table now, I'm guessing if we come back in January and say, well, we'll still deal with that deal, because they've, they've been calling you, they've been calling me, both of them, both sides called me both today, to know how the meeting went, it hadn't happened yet.
So we're really talking two different, I mean, we'd want, ultimately, we'd want, or it'd be ideal to have.
Right, and the reason we're talking about both of them together is Civic Plus is the company that has C Click Fix, they also have a thing called Civic Ready, that does the reaching out program too, but it adds a lot more things with the surveys and all these things, and it's like double the price. So it's, really, you guys probably should go through a demo and look at what it does and everything. The C Click Fix thing, we know we need, if the reporter thing's not going to work anymore, we need to, and Jeremy's been back and forth with this guy numerous times, we've all sent in on demos, we've sent in on presentations by them, but the thing we have right now, if we really want our residents to be able to report issues and get feedback, we need a new system, because the one we have was just kind of, and Ethan, it's done a great job for the last few years, but there's no way to update it, it needs, needs being replaced. You guys can.
So basically, in short, what this would be is, is an app, you open up the app, it will come up to the city's, hey, whatever it is, you can go in, you can report your problem, whether it's pothole, whether it's walking straight out, whether it's whatever. How you can have this set up is, different complaints would be directed to, like code enforcement would be directed to Kurt, you know, majority of stuff will come to, come to my office, but take pictures, you can do a lot of different things with it. And then, the software gives, say, I'm not going to, hate to put you on the spot, Craig, but either you or Kathy would report something.
Yeah.
If you would truthfully put in all your information, and in a correct email, not just a bogus email or whatever, when we would go in to, basically to click receive it, or we received it, we reviewed it, you would get confirmation of that, sent back to your email. You could check back periodically to see what the status is, you know, per se, you called about a drainage issue or a pothole, we would actually look at it, we'd put notes back in there saying, okay, parts are ordered, you know, needs to be contracted out, you know, you can come back and, and just get, kind of like updates, you know, by clicking, back in and looking at it. It also reminds us, like five days into it, hey, you had a notification five days ago that hadn't really been looked at, just kind of in general, a reminder of, hey, you know, you need to take a look at this, you need to do this or that or whatever. It's very user-friendly, and I'm not saying that our current system is not user-friendly, but you would actually physically have to go to our website to get on, to find, to get on, and go through the process. It does not have the automatic response, doesn't have the reminders, it doesn't have a lot of key pieces that the Civic Plus or the C Click Fix has. We would use it a lot in-house, we, when the problem reporter was up working properly, you know, we'd use it as our daily operations. You know, we'd put in our own jobs, we would put in other jobs, because then at the end of the year, it was an easy tally for, it ain't no report, state of the city, hey, we had 63 water leaks, water mains, we had X amount of potholes, we had this, we had that.
So you, you can post internally, you can post it as well.
Yep, correct, correct.
And, and if I read this right, the first year is, what, 5,500, basically, and then the second year is 7,767?
And even, even like during pothole season, you know, if I send an employee out to do potholes or a couple of them, and they have the app on their phone, they can just kind of breeze through it, you know, as, as they're out working, instead of having to come back and say, hey, I, I need the next list.
Yeah, but where was that other one at, you know, they forget.
Oh, yeah.
Talking with a couple of communities about it, a few of them is very heavily used, a few of them is not really used, they, they kind of seem like it's basically the same handful or, you know, that's using it frequently. The good thing about us, the way we would use the domas, we would use it internally for daily operations, and it's an easy tool for the public to communicate with what's wrong.
So it sounds like you're really positive for this.
Dan talked about the TextMyGov, perfect opportunity is, depending whether coming this weekend, or the end of the week. You know, it's an easy blast, it's a quick blast, get the information out, hey, we're under a snow emergency, you know, people lived or whatever, or trash delays due to weather, water main breaks, stuff like that. It's also operationalized, if we put in projects that we are working on, that the city's working on, and people would go in and click on that, if we would have a description on it, they would know right then, hey, they'll replace the water main down through there. You know, they're going to miss it back, so.
Well, just like you guys had this past Sunday, which impacted, you know, Adams, now they did send out a message themselves, but still.
Especially if you intend to heavily use it internally, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, that's what.
That's the key, get out of it what you put into it.
The garage could have a screen like that up, it'll have all the layers on it, if someone's sitting there and it's like, I don't know what I'm going to do the rest of the day, he could click on potholes and see, oh, there's 10 potholes that are on there, I can go fix all those, you know, it just helps them find some things to do, and, you know, you can pick, just like, you know, there's light poles, right, and then we can, whether it's Jeremy or Debbie down there or whatever, or Kurt's office looks at it and says, this one's been on there for a while, let's see what's going on with that, and he may say, oh, you know, they ordered parts, they haven't come in yet, but at least people can see it right in front of them and know what, what needs to be done yet.
Do you have money in the budget?
I, I'm sure there's money available.
And are you looking at 23's budget, or could you possibly 22?
That's you guys' decision, we're at the end of the year now, so.
I know.
They have to be approving that payment in 23, 23's money. But what I'm envisioning eventually operationalize is have, actually invest a little bit of money in a, basically touchscreen TV, where you can have, hang it on the wall of the office, make it where it just physically, you know, click on it or matterize or assign a job, you know, you have three or four things pop up, you can actually just go in there and then take the information right off of it that morning.
So you said if you file a complaint, you can go in and see updates?
Yep, you can.
And an automatic email?
It does.
Every time?
It will, it will, as long as it's a good email.
Okay.
As long as you put an accurate email address in there.
Every time you update something, those people will get an email?
Correct.
Yep.
Now, what, what we ran into with our other system, is it was not set up for automatic email, there just wasn't that.
Program.
Program, and about 80% or 90% of emails were bogus, there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, you know, or a lot of other vulgar words in, in emails that was not true.
So with this system, you don't even have to worry about that.
If they want a response widely.
They have to put in legit.
Accurate information.
Yep.
If they expect a response.
Right.
If you're not going to put in good information.
If it's a required field.
We pick that. So there's all kinds of things on the backend that we get to pick and we get to design. Like sometimes I have, if you're, if it's graffiti, then you can open up another question, is it vulgar? Because vulgar, you know, you want to give your, out the next day, so too many kids don't see it. So there's, we get to pick how that's set up. Now, they have templates, and then we'll spend time with them, they'll either come here, we'll do it virtually, and every single thing, we'll pick through how we want it to read, how we want it to look, you know, stuff like that.
You know, and your, prime example I used when we initiated the, our current system, that my system that we have now, if, I use Tyler, you're, you're driving down the street, you hit the same pothole every morning going to work, spill your coffee all over yourself. Ah, I got to call that in, or I, I got to call somebody, while you get to work, get busy, and we'll look my number up, that's on Monday, on Tuesday, you hit the same pothole, Wednesday, you hit the same pothole, you know, this gives a good, easy tool, pop it open on your phone, hit it, you know, a lot of it is GPS or GIS coordinates, the latitudes, and we've got.
Now, I will say, with both, both softwares, they're only going to be as good as we market it. You know, if we don't get people to sign up for it, it's not going to get used. So if we're going to go forward with it, we need to make sure we get the.
Or also, as you use it too, because you've talked about the internal.
Right.
But you need to use it internally.
So do you select who all the calls go to? Or how, how?
We pick.
We can pick that up through how it's structured, so if it's a code enforcement complaint, it directly be sent to Kurt, through his email.
So somebody's not sitting there watching it, it's, you set it up prior.
If it's a police, a lot of the other communities, they're not doing police and fire complaints. You could if you wanted to, but a lot of them are not, they're just making them, either call City Guard or go, you know, 911, or go directly to police or fire.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful, we don't want to get into 911 type.
Exactly, and that, that's why they're not doing it.
Yeah.
The other good thing, and I'll quit here, slip it out of here, but if Craig has a complaint, if Riley has the same complaint, and Craig's the first one to report it, it will notify widely whenever he tries to report it to, hey, thanks, but this has already been reported. So you don't get five or 10 different blocks, blocks on your map of the same problem.
But he can jump on and put his email in to get the same, get the same response back.
Correct, correct.
I think it's great.
So are these two programs?
Yeah.
It's two different companies.
Yes, two different things, really.
Right, yeah, one's taking everything in, and one's basically putting it out. The TextMyGov really just came from discussions on how do we get information out? And the thing about TextMyGov, is if we use it too much, it's going to get ignored. Like, we're not going to, we're not going to say, hey, there's another concert Thursday night, remember? We may say the first concert, hey, it's the start of the series, it's every Thursday going forward, but we're not going to do it every week, right? We're not going to do every festival and all these things.
I don't know, you might be surprised.
You might be surprised, you give people good information, they know they want that.
You want you to hand it to them.
Yeah, but I don't want an email from Taylor Loft three times a day.
Because that happens with our church, we get overwhelmed sometimes.
And we will put it on Facebook, you know, those kind of things will all be on Facebook. This is more of an alert to let people know.
So do one of these programs offer a question and answers? If I have a question?
Okay, so if you go to either one of their websites, there's, there's tutorials and there's, you can watch a.
Oh, you mean if you have a question?
If I have a question, the citizen I want to answer?
I think so.
You can text it, for TextMyGov, you can text questions in, and it'll either have an automated response, or it'll tell you to call a number.
Right.
I don't know that you would, your question would get to myself, because I would be the one that would be monitoring it, but.
But yeah, if you ask, you can.
There's keywords that you can.
Like, if you would type, when's the first concert? We could have in there, concert is a keyword, and it'll say, go to Decatur Chambers website, and that would be the answer you'd get back.
So then you can, you can build that database.
Right.
So you have a strong chatbot, so you're not answering questions.
Right, yes.
Yeah, the stronger you build it, the less answers you.
Right.
And if it's an emergency alert, you can go by where that cell phone is geographically, and you can have it send out to just that area, if it's something like.
That's good.
They, they also have fences built into these, one of, one of, I'm going to try to explain to you in short, fences that it's, hey, highway, or if it's a county, or whatever, it will just automatically come up and say, hey, this is not in jurisdiction of the city of Decatur. That way, they're not saying, well, I notify the city, and they do anything with it, automatic notification set on our accreditation boundaries, that.
It was outside of our jurisdiction.
They need to contact either the law or.
Well, I, I think you make a great point, first of all, with the C Click Fix, because it's replacing an existing program that needs updated, so I, I think this one needs to move forward.
So, and, and so one other thing, if, if everyone would sign up for C Click Fix and have the app on their phone, we could get messages out through notifications on that C Click, so like, if everyone signed up and we wanted to say a water main break this area, we could send it up and they'll get a notification on their phone. But that means everyone has to be signed up, everyone has to have their notifications on, all this stuff. That's why we're looking at TextMyGov for the other thing, because it's just a text message to every number we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, but is it worth, so you can send the same message out of this click thing, but they'd have to go into the app to read it.
Yeah, they would, they, either they could have their banner set up, or it could just pop up as a notification on your app, just like everything else does.
We need both to be.
But this one says it'll do potholes, drainage, tall grass, junk cars, and this one says you're going to use it for potholes, drainage, junk cars, and issues.
Well, so, the TextMyGov will do it, like say, so you can put a pothole, you could use TextMyGov, text it and say, I have a pothole on this, it's going to give you a response back that says, call this number to, to, to.
Oh, so it's not.
Yeah, there's no map, there's no anything with TextMyGov. But they, they sell it as they do all those things, but like I said, you put in a pothole and say, please call Jeremy Gilbert at this number, and he'll help you with the pothole.
That'll just make people angry. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the C Click Fix with this first year and $5,547.89, and then move forward from there. Does you read this as just a one-year or a two-year contract?
I think people really would love the TextMyGov app. So you made a motion for both?
That's the C Click.
Right now, I'm making a motion for this one first.
Okay, I'll second.
Is that the C Click Fix?
Yeah.
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, okay.
Is it two-year or?
12, 13,000 dollars, for two years.
Yeah, it does have, I think that's in there, right? There's a 5% annual technology happening, increase.
I think it's in there.
Yeah, I'll, to that, just, it's really not the right price.
Is it two-year or?
I think they put the 5% in this number, so that should be a percent.
It, look at, read number two.
Number three.
And then go to three.
I don't know if you, how, how they work, but I'm telling you that people will create that information.
I think everybody likes information. I think everyone wants information. Well, why don't you send it out to this one?
It looks like it's broken down here to one.
That it's a one-year contract, that you have to give ninety days notice.
If you don't want.
Termination, otherwise it.
Well, you can't. Or do you have to have a two-year number?
Actually, I got it's two years, I don't know about.
Where did it go?
This was, this would read like it's one a year at a time.
Yeah, it reads like it's one year, but you do have to give a day's notice, otherwise it's an auto renew for an additional term.
And if, if you guys want more information on the TextMyGov, we can have him do a presentation over virtually on the, on the TV heads. So if you guys want to just take this one for now, and then think about the next one for next month, or whatever.
Yeah, but why they made a motion, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second to go forward with C Click Fix. Did you have a question?
Where are we paying?
Well, I'm.
Yeah, it's on it.
I'm just reading number, I'm just reading.
Just write a check.
Your one, the sum of the one-time cost and the recurring cost will be invoiced at signing of, of this contract, so.
That total investment is. We want you to remake the motion, say, let Jamie and Dan look over the contract with Ann, and if it's the approval, then let him sign for it, we get to make it. You know what I mean? Read word your motion. The other part two, Phyllis, in my opinion, is, is at ninety days, we ought to have a little something, something in our calendar that, that we approve that so we don't get hung for two years if we don't like this after nine months. And I think Wiley'd like to re-say his motion, is that what you want to do? That allow them to study the contract and with their guidance, give Dan the approval?
Yeah, do you need further?
Because we're trying to find out if we're gonna pay it for one year or two years, is that what you're trying to figure out?
Well, right, well, it looks like one year.
You guys review the contract, and if you agree with it, then you can sign for it, Dan.
Can I pull my motion back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we do move forward the C Click Fix with the review of the contract and with Jamie and Dan determining, along with Ann, and if all is okay, that they sign.
Do you want in the motion where we're gonna pay it from?
I'll second it.
No, I need to know.
Where, where do you want to pay it from? That's what, the other thing.
Because it's gonna be re-accrued.
Well, that's what I was asking earlier, what, where'd it come out of earlier?
It didn't.
It was filled, it was filled by Ethan Snyder when he was an employee.
No, but I mean, no, I mean, that's what I asked about, are we doing twenty-two's budget or twenty-three's budget?
Well, it probably should be split privately between the water department and the street department.
Split it with me, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just say, if you use my water to fix water mains and the street department.
I mean, code enforcement too, if you go.
Let's split it. We, we see after the first year where the majority is.
Right, see what the, the actual uses.
Oh, and then break it out on percentages, cost share.
What, like seven grand first year?
It's fifty-five, forty-five, four, seven.
That moves up.
To water.
Just split it between street and water in the first year, and then.
So it's half and half the first year?
Let's see what.
Determine from there. And I'll second Wiley's motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
We're just have a tool out there for the public to use, and we're just have to educate them, and hopefully they. Thank you.
And then we'll show people how to use it.
They provide marketing materials.
Well, that's right, they do.
Yeah, down there.
So the TextMyGov, what do you guys?
Look into this. I don't know, you don't think you could do the same thing with this?
Yes, so.
Yeah, to the app.
You can, the difference is you have to agree to get the notifications. Like, when you download an app on your phone, I, I always turn my notifications off, but you have to actively get it out there, that, hey, you have to have the notifications on to be able to get this. Otherwise, they can check their app and they can see what was posted, but it's not gonna get to them like a text message would.
I want, I want to, I want to reach out to the school too, because I want to see what they use.
Because, like, even if you had to go in, and if I had something, I was thinking about the city, and I, I go into the app, I can look at the notification, and I'm not getting bothered. And then you can send out notifications for everything. That way, it's all outreach all the time. I just gotta go back and look at the notifications.
Just need to train your audience to watch it, and you just can't, you can't do it once and then not do it, because then it's not gonna work.
I think you'll get two or three, four times more people to sign up.
Yeah, probably. With, with the schools, you send the information out as far as you sign up for how you want to receive it.
Right, right.
If you want it email, you supply email. If you want it text, you supply that, or, or you can do both, you know, it's.
But what are they using to send that out?
In the company, yeah.
That's what I tell you, it's called Paying App, and you're just, whenever you go, like, stir your kid, to like, you need to sign up for this app if you want to know about school aides, lunch changes, A and F stuff. So if everybody signs up, at least one parent.
Right, but North Adams, it's text messages, phone calls, and emails.
Yeah, that's a different thing, but it's, it's probably the same thing since then.
It's.
You can put it in once you sign up.
Companies are all the same, it's a matter of.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I'd be willing to turn on my notifications to get it.
So let's, we'll hold up on this, and we'll look into it a little more and see.
Yeah.
Maybe get this up and run it and see if.
They are good technologies, though.
Okay, thanks for bringing this, though.
So we are moving forward with the C Click Fix.
Yeah.
Once it's, Ann refused the contract, right?
Right.
Well, I would just like clarification.
Oh, well, yeah, the first year.
Yeah.
Make sure we're only paying a one-year contract.
Water and street.
Water and street, first year.
Hey, Bill, did you have anything else to add? Do you have anything else to add? Got a question, or you got a finger up? I'm just glad it was that finger.
It wasn't.
All right.
That was serious.
All right.
Department heads, Kevin?
Uh, been a busy, busy year. We got a lot of accomplishments, a lot coming up in the next couple of years. Martin's going to be, a lot of major projects coming up. He'll be here about in the next few months, so.
What's, what's your insignia on your hat?
Thank you, fifth and sixth grade war girls won tonight, twenty to fifteen.
Okay.
Armored.
The head coach falls out of his system, Commodore wheel.
I'm glad you wore your uniform, I like it.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
Uh, Trash Rocks, doing, actually, running well already. Guys are gaining a lot of time, are getting a lot quicker at it. The calls, actually went to, just, hey, I really liked, I need another key. Instead of people yelling and screaming and carrying on, but things are going well with that. So, thanks for the support, but I think that's which I think is very wise, I think, but I don't know which weather forecaster you believe in the next couple of days, but just stay tuned to what's going on. It could be a very dangerous couple of days.
Yeah.
Not so much with the snow, but the wind. I watched tonight before I come in here, and there's an average of forty-five, or, yeah, forty-five to fifty-two mile an hour winds for Thursday until probably early Saturday morning. So, stay tuned, we are ready, but, you know, winds, it'll be harder in places to be with. So, I want to thank you guys and the board, other department heads for cooperation throughout twenty-two there. Like Kevin said, we've got a lot of accomplishments that are still on the air yet, so, thank you.
Jeremy, one question.
Yeah.
I think it's a trash can battle, but if someone has a sweeper sitting beside a trash can, if they would pick that sweeper up and put it in the trash can, it would get dumped in the back of the dump, the trash truck, correct? Just put it in the trash can.
Now, the, the statute of rule is next week, it's not heavy trash, but if you have some extra trash due to Christmas, you can set it outside the can, but we won't be running up and stuff to jump around, I think that stuff up, but it is not heavy trash.
Stress that it's not heavy trash. Just because you get a new couch, doesn't mean we're taking a couch.
Not heavy, bag, trash, and or cardboard only.
There you go, bag, yes.
Keep in mind, wrapping paper, styrofoam is non-recyclable. We won't be running recycling next week, throw that in trash.
Wrapping paper goes trash?
Yes, wrapping paper's non-recyclable. The styrofoam and all the packed peanuts and stuff from one of your gifts, not recyclable.
Do we have something to put out there? Do you have that?
Yes, it is going up tomorrow or Thursday, as a reminder to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff?
Uh, reiterate what Jeremy said, the incoming weather, everybody needs to be aware of it. I'm just reading one that is put out on Facebook by Josh Robey, and I'm concerned, but this is only one, so, kind of want to thank you as a board member, and what you've done for the firefighters this past year, saved my life from really easier, and I appreciate that very much. Just, everybody needs to have a Merry Christmas, and we say.
Kurt?
Last meeting, we talked about appraisals for one thirty-eight North Second Street and seven ten Shermyer Street. Council decided to table one thirty-eight North Second Street for possible grants. According to my notes, maybe I missed something, uh, seven ten Shermyer Street, we talked about doing seal bids with the option to rig the bid, that bid opening. And I got written down here by last meeting in January seventeenth. Are we still on board with that?
That was the hope and goal. It'll be, it'll likely be the first meeting in February when the bids actually get opened.
That's what I was wondering, is it's been published?
It hasn't been pub, the notice hasn't been published yet.
I've had a few individuals hit me up.
I bet.
I've had a few individuals hit me up about that property, about what we want to do.
Okay.
How, on Shermyer Street?
No, I know, what's, when's the meeting now? About the seventeenth?
No, no, no. It's, no, there's still our regular council meeting on the seventeenth. It's just that the timing for notice and bids and everything necessary will likely be the first meeting in February.
You always have a goal, and you work towards that goal, and sometimes you have to alter that goal, so.
And then I just, I want to thank Board of Works and Council for basically covering baby enforcement this last year. This has been the roughest year we had in COVID for a while. There's been a few situations where we've all been really, really hairy with certain orders, but we've had a few people come in front, Board of Works, Board of Works has covered us really well, so I want to thank you all for that. I wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Katie?
Thank you all for everything you do, and Merry Christmas.
Lenny?
Uh, first, I'm getting my department. I want to thank you for the COVID bonus, and a lot of my guys happening. So I appreciate everybody involved on, on doing that. You got an email from Officer Elwell, very appreciated, so I do appreciate that. Twenty-twenty-two is probably one of my, one of the most difficult years for me. I hope in twenty-three it'll be better, and I hope we start with a good hire in the first meeting. So, thank you for all you do for the police department, I appreciate it. My guys do, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Council?
I'd like to thank all of you up here at the frontier for all the work that you do, Dan, Phil, and council members. Thank the departments and the city workers and everyone for the job well done during this past year, twenty-twenty-two, and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Please take time to enjoy this with your families and
I want to say one thing, I, it's been another great year. I appreciate how, how well everyone works together. I just had a mayor's conference last, last week. Not every city's like this. We see mayor's battle with councilor, or with councilman, mayor's battle with quick treasures. It happens in a lot of places, and I am so happy that everyone works together so well. Everyone has the same goal. All we're trying to do is make the city of Decatur better, right, every day. And I think everyone here is involved in doing that, and I think our employees and our department heads, thank you guys so much for what you do. As you guys all know, I, I didn't come here to run your departments for you, and I, I try to stay out of it. I think we have the right people in the right positions running departments, and I thank you guys for doing a great job with your departments. So thank you, guys. Thank you for listening, and for, I mean, I think we have a great team, and I appreciate it.
I continually getting people to make positive comments about Decatur and changes that have been made over the last several years, but, and the downtown area and so forth. And last night, I had some individuals make that, that comment again, too, that just things, Decatur's moving forward, and it takes, like you said, everyone to make that happen.
Take the whole team.
That's right.
Hey, I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second.
Motion to second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Hold the same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.